Thank you, Venetians, for coming out for Carrie Birdseye's announcement of her campaign for city council. We welcome you all here. I'm really excited. You may know my name is Terry Malika. I'm a business owner and a resident of Venetia and a member of the Planning Commission, where I've worked with Carrie for a number of years now. And I'm so pumped to be here today to be announcing her candidacy for city council. But before we get started, we have a few supporters here that are gonna...
That's better.
That's better? Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm getting up close and personal. All right, so we have a few people that would like to say a few words in support of Carrie's campaign and welcome you all here. And so we'll begin with Steve Young, our mayor of Venetia.
I first met Carrie about eight years ago, I guess. As Terry said, we were both on the Planning Commission together. And those of you like Ms. Apple and Terry who are on the Planning Commission now understand that most of the things that we do are somewhat routine. But then in, I think it was 2014, the Crew by Rail project came up and we were sitting next to each other. We were placed next to each other on the dais. And so for two years, we heard representations and presentations by Valero and the consultants and them. We did not, we weren't allowed to ask any questions for the whole, about a two-year period. When we finally were able to ask questions, when the EIR was ready to be certified, we had a lot of questions. And those questions, both from myself and from Carrie, I think were instrumental in getting the Planning Commission to vote 7-0 against this proposal. And it was, I think, a shock to the rest of the community, certainly a shock to the Planning Commission and to Valero, who had probably never been turned down for anything. And so they had to scramble to figure out, you know, how to handle the appeal that came Fortunately or unfortunately for the people in Oregon, there was a derailment of a Southern Pacific train with the same product on it, with the same train cars, derailed up in Oregon, closed I-5 for 18 hours. And at that point, council member Strawbridge, to her credit, changed her vote and said she was now going to vote against it, which meant that there were three votes against it. And the rest of the council, being able to count to three, went along and denied it on a unanimous vote. So in 2016, I ran, I left the Planning Commission, I ran for city council, I was successful. Valero did not really get involved in that election. In 2018, Carrie ran for city council and she ran against council members Strawbridge and Lionel Largospata. And both of them were backed by the PAC that was formerly known as Venetia Working Families to elect Christina Strawbridge and Lionel Largospata and defeat Carrie Birdseye. And they made it very clear by their title of their PAC what they intended to do, and they did it. And they were very aggressive in their advertising. And there was a lot of "Birdseye, bad for Venetia" slogans that went out there without any real explanation of why she was bad for Venetia. But it was successful. Carrie lost that election. They were elected. So I think the PAC and Valero at that time said, well, that must work. So when I ran for mayor in 2020, they decided to run it back again. But we had at least learned some things from the 2018 election, and we were prepared for the kind of negative advertising. They spent a quarter million dollars against Carrie, they spent a quarter million dollars against me. They've already, you know, clearly it didn't work because I was elected. So now here we are in 2022 with another election in front of us. Valero has already publicly said that they have in fact donated another $200,000 into their PAC with the intent of spending it on this election. And I have been very public in saying that this is bad for Venetia, bad for democracy. It's not the kind of thing that we should allow to happen, but it is legal. And there's not a lot of things we can do except the kind of groundwork that is necessary to overcome this kind of spending. Now, I spoke with the general manager, Valero, on a couple of occasions. I let him know my position on their spending and said that I would campaign against anybody that they endorsed. I asked all the candidates to take a pledge that they would not take any Valero money or accept their endorsements. And when I said, well, you know, what do you know about Carrie? They said, well, all we really know is that she works for the National Resources Defense Council and she's an environmentalist. As if being an environmentalist ought to disqualify you from serving on the city council. I think we all should be environmentalists. I expect we all are to one degree or another. And to have an environmentalist on the city council would certainly be an improvement and a clear addition. I think Carrie, in the five years that she has served as chair of the Planning Commission, she has proven her abilities. She is probably one of the most qualified city council candidates that I have come across ever. And that includes me. Carrie has certainly put in her time. She has the smarts and the experience to do the job. And her being on the council, it would be a big step forward for our community. So I was able to make a good donation to her today. I hope the rest of you can make donations as well. If you're not at the point where you can make a big donation, make a small donation. And if you can't do that, sign up to volunteer. Make phone calls, do texts, write postcards, walk precincts. This is gonna be, all these things are gonna be necessary for Carrie and us to be successful because we don't have $250,000 to spend. And we're gonna, you know, scramble to get enough money. But I'm confident that this community will step up and support her in a way that will allow her to be successful. And so thank you all for coming out and for your support for Carrie. And looking forward to a hot political season, but we're gonna need it.
And we're very fortunate to have with us today a representative of the county, our supervisor, Monica Brown, who represents District 2, representing Vallejo, Venetia, Fairfield, and Cordelia. Monica is here today to tell you why she supports Carrie's campaign and urge you to do the same. Monica?
Hi, hi. There are priorities. I love Carrie. This is why it's important for me on the Board of Supervisors to have Carrie. Carrie, first off, not only has she lived in the community a long time, but her kids went to public schools. Those of you who know me understand what that means because I'm a retired teacher of 39 years. And public schools are the great equalizer. It's very important that we keep everybody informed and engaged, et cetera. But more than that for Carrie, yeah, more than that for Carrie is that she served on the Fair Board. And she comes back and talks to me about everything that was going on and said, I'm gonna be running, so I need some space and time to do that, which was great. But she helped with that. What I need, and one of the things that I like being on this, being on the Board of Supervisors, is that I can come to folks on city councils and say, we need to work together. For example, the American Rescue Plan, we're working. I'm working with Venetia, obviously Fairfield, Vallejo. I don't want them not to hear that I'm not working with them too, but today it's Venetia. Working with Venetia, what can the county do in terms of our rescue plan money to help Venetia with their rescue plan money to help make sure that people have what they need, which was either jobs or housing? But what helps me is that I feel very welcome coming here to Venetia. And that's because you have relationships. So Carrie has been very welcoming to me. Many of you out here have been too. But that, it all works together because there's more stuff behind the scenes. I was making the comment as all of this got put up. Some of you just walked up and saw it done, but there are people behind the scenes that make that happen. You are the behind-the-scenes people. And yes, and my girlfriend, Ana Patero, is on the school board for Fairfield. So soon came and she's supporting too. Yeah, because this is a community effort. It doesn't just stop in Venetia. Think about the Crew by Rail. I had forgotten about what happened in Oregon. I just did because, you know, there's so much that's going on. But that is a community and we work together. I didn't have that much in terms of what I could do on the Board of Supervisors other than connecting with all of the supervisors up and down on the rail. So that part's important because all of us wanna have, I mean, look at this beautiful park. We've got trees, we have blue skies, we have the waterfront. There's so much that's positive going on. Who do you want there? And okay, one more thing. I'm sorry, just, I gotta say this. Why the F is Valero always after Carrie? Okay, what is it that they are afraid of? Seriously, I am so tired of this. And why is that happening? So...
Because she's a woman and wise.
Let's put it in the correct order. She's a woman and wise, right? Because she will stand up and say, no, that isn't right. Or yes, this is a good thing. And you know you can trust her judgment and she will do it after she's talked with you guys. She just doesn't make these decisions in a vacuum. That's what I love about Carrie. We don't always have to agree, and I hope we don't always agree. I want a Jefferson and a Hamilton, right? I wanna be able to have that dialogue, that we come together, and that's the key. So that's what I need. So I need somebody like Carrie so that when I have an issue at the county, what can I help or the county can do for Venetia, let me know. But I still think you guys need to understand everything that was just mentioned. If you can't give, look, and, well, I don't mean to be rude to Starbucks, but just don't do Starbucks every day, right? Take that money, give it to Carrie. Because Bernie taught us, if everybody gives $3, we can have the money to do what we need to do, but it's definitely gonna be grassroots. So from now until November, just say to yourself, I'm never gonna have a free weekend. It's just not gonna happen. I'm just sharing, that's how it's gonna be. But I endorse Carrie. I know all of you guys endorse Carrie. Changes need to be made. And then ask yourself, what happens if we don't have her? Think about that. You guys know who's on the board on the city council. What happens if we don't have her? Somebody needs to also help the mayor. So thank you very much. Thank you for letting me come and speak a couple minutes. And I will give it over to...
Terry.
Well, another Terry? God, how many Terrors are there?
She's a longtime Venetia resident and her kids attended local schools. And she's currently the interim chair for the Progressive Democrats of Venetia, a longtime environmental activist and a member of the Neighborhood Steering Committee and the Venetia Community Air Monitoring Program. Please welcome to the stage Kathy Kirig.
Thank you very much. It's really an honor to be here today to endorse Carrie for city council. As many of you know, I've been active in Venetia for many years, attending city council meetings. I was on the Community Sustainability Commission. And I have participated in some of the most contentious issues that our city has faced. But when I retired seven years ago, I started to go to even more city meetings, as my husband will attest. Because of my interest in housing, I started to attend the Planning Commission meetings. And that's where I really saw Carrie in action as chair of the Planning Commission. And she does a great job. She's always respectful to the participants. She makes sure that every commissioner has an opportunity for input. She appreciates the work that the staff does. She's always prepared. The commission is well-run and it gets things done. In a time when we see so much dysfunction and downright rudeness and disrespect on the federal level, it's really nice to see what a local government can and should be run like. After the 2016 election, I became a member of the Steering Committee of the Progressive Democrats of Venetia. We're the largest Democratic club in Solano County. Carrie's also been a member of the Steering Committee, so I've been able to see her in action at a very personal level. She is so knowledgeable and says so many contacts that she's just brought tremendous value to our work. She's one of those people who, when she volunteers to do something, it gets done, it gets done well, and you completely depend upon her. She's a great collaborator, she's easy to get along with, and it's been a pleasure to work with her on this group. She's also been a member of the Solano County Democratic Central Committee. So you start getting into the weeds there. Here, her knowledge is invaluable. She's someone who I contact if I sort of want to find out what's going on behind the scenes. She knows the ins and the outs and she keeps track of things. So she's giving up her time, her intelligence, and her commitment. Also, she's willing to help on a personal level. Carrie's in communications and she's helped me on a couple of occasions to coach me when I'm gonna be talking to someone, so I'm sure that I get my points across. And her help is really invaluable. And I wanna know, this is one of the most interesting things about her, how many of you know that she won an Emmy as a new broadcast news producer when she worked for CNN for 11 years? I thought that was pretty impressive to me. So I heartily endorse Carrie Birdseye for city council. I've seen her in action in various roles, and she's competent, intelligent, hard-working person. Her values are in the right place, and I have no doubt that she will always put the health and safety of Venetia first. She'll bring her concerns about the environment, climate change, housing, and protecting the character of our city to the city council. We are at a critical stage on many fronts, and local government can make such a difference. With the right people on the council, we'll be able to move forward on local issues that have a broader impact. I like to think globally and act locally, and Carrie will do the same thing. I have trust in her to represent us and to provide a voice on city council that I know will have the best interests of both our city and humanity at heart. So please vote, volunteer, and donate to make sure Carrie is elected. Thank you. So I'm changing hats right now. Elizabeth Patterson cannot be here today. So I'm going to pretend that I'm Elizabeth, and I'm going to read the remarks that she prepared too. So close your eyes for a second, now pretend I have black hair. I regret I cannot be here in person to help launch Carrie Birdseye's election campaign. It feels like missing the Oscar celebration for the best picture. Because Carrie is the best candidate for city council for our city. I know Carrie is the best choice for council because I've worked with her and observed her on the Planning Commission. Carrie's a great listener and uses that skill to get commissioners to work through thorny issues that come before the Planning Commission. Carrie is empathetic. She thinks of others and their ideas, hopes, and needs without thought of how it will help or affect her. This is the mark of a true public servant. Carrie is smart. She uses her education and work experience to understand and analyze situations and ask the right questions. This skill is used at the Planning Commission to elicit questions that need to be addressed. When her family needs her, Carrie's there to support them. And they support her because, like all of us here today, they know she's the best. My heart soars like an eagle when I hear Carrie discussing the most challenging issue we face: climate chaos. Because she has the facts and knowledge of the issues of fossil fuels, air pollution, warming, and drought-driven water supply. Carrie knows what is needed to lower greenhouse gases. A few years ago, our city was a leader in California reducing our carbon footprint. You can count on Carrie to get us back on track. Trustworthy, hardworking, and dedicated to making Venetia the best little city in California, Carrie is a sure bet to be our next city council member. My only regret, besides not being here, is that I won't have the pleasure of serving with her on the city council. Join me in supporting Carrie Birdseye for city council. Thank you.
So our next speaker is a representative of our artist community, which is so important to Venetia, well-recognized in the community as a member who is involved not only with the arts, but also involved in the politics today. Just last weekend, she was one of the organizers and leaders of the Women's Reproductive Rights Event that took place here in the Marina Green. So let me introduce to you Nikki Bosch Davis.
Thank you. I'll have to read because I'm not a great public speaker. So my name is Nikki Bosch Davis. I have been part of the art community in this town for 35 years. I speak for many of my artist friends when I say that the main thing that makes artists feel appreciated is when people come to share their events. And when the leaders of our community listen to their needs. For artists to keep creating, they need to know that what they invent in the silence of their studios has meaning. Carrie has the prettiest blue eyes, with which she looks straight at you and gives you her full attention. I like that. It gives me a sense of being listened to. Carrie is one of the few leaders in our community that since her arrival to Venetia in 2000 has supported the arts. I see her at openings and art events, always with an encouraging word. As a PTA leader, she ensured that art in her children's school was a priority by promoting Art Days, where our artists volunteered to inspire students by teaching and creating art with them. Our town is known for its art. It has the potential of becoming the Carmel of East Bay. We have a stellar... We have a stellar art center and an amazing population of artists. What we need is leaders that will recognize our contribution and help in making our town a destination for art lovers and shoppers. Because when these visitors are drawn to our art, to the art in our town, they visit our restaurants, our shops, boutiques, and antiques shops. That creates a strong economy. We have two candidates this year that can help put us on the map: Carrie Birdseye and Terry Scott. And I support them both.
I am so excited to be able to introduce the candidate to you at this time. I've worked personally with Carrie on the Planning Commission for a number of years. And I have to say, all the observations that you've heard about her are so true. She's smart, she studies, she has a very balanced approach. She listens to everybody and what they have to communicate, even if they're advocating for positions that she disagrees with. And she's so diplomatic in the way that she responds to make sure that everybody knows that they've been heard. This is an important quality for a leader on the city council. And this is exactly the kind of leadership that we need here in Venetia. Let me introduce you to the next city council member for the city of Venetia, Carrie Birdseye.
Wow. That's a lot to live up to. Thank you so much for coming out today. I really, really appreciate everything that your community leaders have shared with you today, so give them a round of applause, please. I also want to recognize that we have two planning commissioners in our midst, in addition to Terry and myself. Commissioner Apple and Commissioner Katton are here today. Thank you so much for joining us. So you have learned a little bit about me even before I came up to the mic. I think I wanna share a few things through the lens of three things, the three things that really make me tick: science, community service, and Venetia. We'll start with science because that's the tough one. I love science. I went back to school when my son Joe was just starting his soccer career and made my husband James take him to all the games on the weekends, and I went back to school and I got my Masters of Science in Environmental Management. I knew that science is important to our future. And, you know, if they wanna label me an environmentalist again, go right ahead. I think everybody should be an environmentalist. If you don't take care of our earth and it's not a priority, what is your priority? What is your priority other than saving our future? Placing greed, personal greed, above, you know, our future? That's why I think that all of us here and anybody that knows me knows that addressing climate change is a serious matter. Science, I wanna talk about climate change and I wanna talk about leadership during the pandemic and the fact that we did not have federal leadership that took the virus seriously and didn't believe in science. And 1 million people died because of it. We didn't need to lose that many people. Had we had proper leadership and had we had an engaged community, nation, I don't think that we would have, you know, had Trump for those years. And I'm so glad that we have better leadership and people running our federal government that both believe in science. I believe that climate change is real. I believe that we're now feeling the effects of climate change. I believe that it's human-caused, and I believe it's gonna be solved by humans too. Everything we do, especially our leaders, has to be seen through that lens. And I'm feeling good about what the Biden administration's trying to do. Maybe in the midterm elections, we'll get more folks that believe in science elected and get some real change, real actions taking place soon. All right, so that's my somber science talk. Now let's talk about community service. You've heard from our community leaders up here that I take community service very, can you hear me, very, very seriously. Since Joey there was in diapers and his older sister was in kindergarten, I stepped up and I served on their Matthew Turner Elementary School PTA with my friend Rhonda out there. And, you know, served many years, took the biggest fundraiser they had for the PTA. Before our team got in there, they were making, they netted about $30,000 a year, which did good things for our school. We got in there, we turned it into 100 grand a year. We put whiteboards in each classroom. We got teachers their own laptops. We put a new playground in, the first new playground that our elementary schools had seen in a long time. We got it done. Because when I volunteer, it's not, like, I volunteer a lot of times with my friends, but it's not to make friends, it's not to socialize. When I volunteer and serve my community, I wanna get stuff done. And that's, I've been doing that, Joe's 19 now, and I've been doing that for, you know, the 20 years that we've been here. So running for city council is an extension of that. I don't, you know, it's a volunteer position. You don't get paid. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of trolls out there. Why would I put myself through this unless I feel like this... Why would I put myself through this unless I feel like this, you know, this is the next step in my evolution of community service? But it can't just be our mayor and the city council people and the most of you have stepped up and volunteered in one way or another. We need a diversity of voices and a diversity of perspectives on every level, on the Arts and Culture Commission, on every commission that the city has. The nonprofits in our community need your help. If we don't step up and serve our community, then only the people that are driven by self-interest will make the decisions for us. And we need people that think outside of their personal gain and profit. And I feel like you're here because you're that type of person, and thank you very much for showing up and doing the volunteer work that you do. I'm looking around, most everybody here I know I volunteered in some capacity with. So thank you for your service as well. Okay, so the last thing that makes me tick is Benicia. I love Benicia. I love raising my family in Benicia. My heart swirls with pride when I come downtown and see it bustling and, you know, the restaurant's full and, you know, the gallery's full. And that just warms my heart. And we need to keep Benicia special. We need to understand and think about the future of Benicia. And that means making some tough decisions. There's a list of things that I want to talk about. I want to talk about the rich history that we have here, the culture that we have here. We have to save our history. And, you know, and that means, you know, supporting the Benicia Historical Society and Museum. That means making sure that areas that should be saved, that have cultural significance, that we recognize that before we build or, you know, exploit those areas the ways they shouldn't be exploited. We need to understand our history and honor it. Open spaces. There's a lot of talk right now about our, you know, affordable housing, and I will get into that because I do know a thing or two, being on the Planning Commission, of what we've done for, looking forward to doing on housing and including affordable housing, but not at the expense of our open spaces. Our open spaces attracted so many of us. I know it attracted my family here. So in the fall, what was known as Measure K, I don't know what it's going to be this time, but we have to extend Measure K for the next 10 years. You'll be able to ensure that our open spaces out there at Sky Valley in between us and Valero, ensure that those beautiful hills are preserved and that, you know, there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of need for housing, and we want to ensure that that area stays the way it is, open and a peace of mind when you drive by there. Bob Berman, thank you for your service on that. Arts Benicia and our arts community, Nikki said it, you know, I'm a big fan of our artists in town. Vicki Dennis, I have your yard signs for Terri Scott and Mayor Young in my garage, and I'm going to put them to good use as many times as I need to. So, you know, artists need to be able to have room to create, and they need to be supported. And I intend to make those a priority if I'm elected for city council. I talked a little bit about downtown and what, you know, how proud it all makes me feel. But, you know, the industrial park is an important part of our community as well. We have to ensure that they have safe roads out there. We have to ensure that we get a diverse set of businesses out there. And, you know, Steve and I have done a little bit of that in making sure that cannabis was, the business of cannabis was legalized in our community. And pretty soon, we'll be figuring out just what that's bringing into our community money-wise. And I'm really proud of that work. And I think we need to make a priority of diversifying our economic base here in Benicia. We cannot rely on Valero for 1/3 of our city budget.
Love? No, one? Twelve?
So it's 1/8.
1/8 of our city budget. So attracting the businesses that will be good neighbors. Renewable energy is just exploding right now. Why don't we make room for those clean companies? You know, in 13 years, in 2035, Californians will not be able to buy fossil-fueled vehicles. And that means that we're not going to need, go ahead, yes. State leadership, yes. Make that happen. We have strong climate action goals at the state level. We need to realize those here in our community as well. So what does that mean when we're reliant on Valero as a big contributor to our economic base here? That means that we need to bring other big companies in that will be better neighbors. You know, Supervisor Brown says, you know, why does Valero have this big chip on their shoulder about Carrie? Why are they always going after Carrie? It's because I'm going to speak truth to power, and I'm not going to let them lie to us. In 2018, when I was running, you know, there was talk of an industrial safety ordinance. And that meant better oversight of the refinery. That meant regular meetings. That meant, you know, better communication, not just through the fire chief or the mayor, but a citizens' board that can provide oversight and ensure that our air quality is being monitored. You know, it shouldn't be up to Constance to get, you know, all of her friends and people that we know to put on our own air monitoring apparatus on our houses. It should be at every school. Anywhere there's sensitive populations, that's where those air monitors need to be. But that means that's money, and that means that's knowledge. And I don't think that they want us to have that. So that's why I'm scary. I don't, little me, I'm not going to run a refinery out of town, but I'm going to hold them accountable. And, you know, I mean, lying to us for 13 years, that didn't feel good. They said, trust us, trust us. And then they, you know, exceeded all kinds of emissions limits. When, you know, and we wonder why we have high cancer rates, high asthma rates. It's not a coincidence. And so these things are what we need to talk about. And if you elect me to city council, I'll have that conversation wherever we need to have it. So thank you for showing up today, my strongest advocates. It's a lovely day. We couldn't have done this without you. I want to call out specifically, folks, that anybody that has my 2018 button on that says Birdseye for Benicia, they're on my campaign team. And I couldn't have done this alone. It took, we met, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 times putting this together. Tom Bilbo, who's live streaming and filming right now. Thank you, Tom. Jack Kolk is on, right there. He's our tech guru. There's so many more of you. Terri, thank you so much for emceeing today and helping put this together. Really, I just showed up. I was supposed to bring paper plates or paper cups, and I forgot to do that, so Jack ran across the street. So it's a real team effort. And if you want me elected in November, of course, I need your vote, but I also need your support in so many ways because it's, you know, we have a limit of voluntary campaign finance limit of less than $40,000 per candidate. That doesn't go very far when you have a quarter of a million dollars saying lies about you. So I didn't run last time. I'm feeling, I didn't run in 2020. I'm glad we have the mayor that we have today. Together, we'll really get a lot done if I'm elected. So thank you so much for being here. And I look forward to connecting with all of you. Thank you.